All right, we're live, Janet.
All right.
You don't need to...
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting of the New London Select Board back to order. And we can finish our budget discussions. Okay. So, we're gonna do... Bonded debt, is that what we want to start with? Bill?
Janet?
Yes.
Did we lose what happened this morning?
Yeah.
I just, I wrote down three things that we thought we should reduce.
Okay.
I was about to say anything on Lynn. Kim have? Cemetery maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
The executive, two things, the discretionary fund for the selectmen.
Correct.
Moderators' compensation.
Mm-hmm.
And the Chamber of Commerce, four things. Is there anything else that we changed?
Okay.
No?
All right.
So, that's the total of what we changed this morning, that I have.
Okay. All right.
Opposed changes.
Okay, shall we start with bonded debt? Is that right? Well, the first page I have is capital reserve fund. Shall we start with that? Want to do that? The way our book's set up?
The way the book is set up.
Yeah, let's do that.
There it is.
So, what page do you want?
I'm on the very end of the book. Lift up all your pages. The very end.
Oh, I read the book.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you want to address what you would like to do with the capital reserve funds?
So, it seems to me, and I think I said this at one of our other meetings recently, that what we, right now, we know that we've got a, where's the budget sheet? All these different pieces of paper. Where is the... There it is, okay. So, we have a 4.6% increase in the budget minus $10,000 or so, okay? This is the single page. And then we come down to the next lines, and we've got some capital outlays here. We've got to talk about those. We haven't decided on those yet totally. And then we come down to the next line. Where is it? Oh, just above that, we have a dash for transfers to capital reserves that we need to add in there. I was proposing that we start by putting a million dollars in there. Last year, we spent, we did only 471. I think the previous year, it was, uh... Previous year, it was 967,510. And so, I was thinking that we did about half. And so, we ought to start thinking about a million dollars. And if we did that, that would add about, almost 5% to the total. So, we'd have to be a total of about 9.6%. Follow me?
I'm not sure where you are.
I'm saying, I took the 4.6...
Okay, I'm looking at the back pages. What are you looking at?
Okay.
So, you're looking at this, the total thing?
I'm looking at this sheet here.
Which you put the new one in that has $100,000 for the library.
Oh, here.
Yeah, okay.
This.
I don't, yeah.
I'm with you now.
Okay. Yep, here it is with the library, sorry.
So, you're saying make that total number a million?
So, I'm saying make that number a million. And if we did that, it would make the total percentage change at about 10%. Plus or minus? 4.6 plus...
Yep.
Doesn't matter. It's bigger than 9 and less than 10, okay?
Yep.
So, but, because we have to have some sort of a number that we are sort of working towards, right?
Yep.
Usually, we have something that's been presented by the department heads and so on. We don't have that this year, yet. So, then if we go back to where we were, we take the FY '25 column and start down it, right? And those are the things we could add, go through and say, yep, and see how, and I think you have very nicely added it already for Lynn, I believe. So, it comes up to...
So, the numbers in the columns on this spreadsheet, Lynn, and the numbers, are those, are you taking those from the Capital Improvement Plan?
Some from the Capital Improvement Plan, those are the ones that are right out there.
Yeah.
And I took some from the department heads.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a hybrid there?
Yeah, Bill, what department heads, you said department heads didn't give you numbers? Any expenditure the department head wants to make out of capital reserves should be listed in there?
I'm sorry, they are.
Okay.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong piece of paper. So, the sheets that Lynn has given us.
Yeah.
Total. For $1,188,803. For... Right. And I'm saying, good, we know that. And the next year, it's 1.6, and the next year, it's 1.8, right?
Yep.
At least estimated for now.
Estimated for now.
The future years are, yeah.
But... It's clear that we're gonna either run down the balances to do all of that, or we're gonna have to put in even more. And so, I was thinking, well, let's start with the, I don't think we can do more than a million this year. I don't think we can possibly ask the taxpayers to do more than a million dollars this year. We knew it was gonna be a big increase because we went half last year. So, then I would look at the requests and say, you know, how would we, I mean, we could look at the current balances or whatever we want to do, and where would we spread a million dollars? $100,000 for the library? What else? Or do any other way? We need to look at the expenditures or look at the transfers in or out, whichever way we want to go. You've got transfers out already, Lynn, of over a million dollars, right? Million, oh, that number we just, I just read. Or we go by account, by account.
Right, and one of those expenses out is for the fire truck that we already have a contract. We must pay that one. So, while some of the expenditures, you could discuss whether we're gonna buy a piece of equipment, the fire truck payment must come out.
Sure. So, let me just, what I had noodled was, we've gotta do the fire breathing apparatus because that expense is coming soon. That's 200. Fire vehicles are coming on, that's 200. Highway equipment's coming, that's 200. Building maintenance is 150. Sewers coming is 200, and libraries 100. That adds up to 1,000, 1,050,000. So, I did nothing for energy, nothing for communications equipment, nothing for police equipment, nothing for town vehicles, nothing for gravel roads, nothing for conservation, nothing for radios, nothing for computer maintenance, nothing for records management, nothing for sidewalk projects. I just took it and put it into six piles to get to a little over a million dollars. But, that's different than sort of doing 5,000 here and 10,000 there. But, I think in those six or seven places is where the big expenditures are going to be in the next year or two, and we've gotta build those ones up.
I think I'm confused on the last page of...
What, you're in the worksheet?
Yeah, of the capital reserve funds worksheet. The thing with the tan line through the middle of it, not that. On the last page, I'm trying to figure out the balance that's left in the, the total balance left in the capital reserve funds. So, if I look at the bottom, total transfers, this year, we put 481,500 in. We're spending 674 this year?
Right, the fiscal year 24.
So, and then I see cumulative balance. Negative 674. So, I'm trying to say, what's our, what is the balance of all of our capital reserve accounts going to be at the end of this? With the, what we put in 481.5 and what we're taking out, 674, 135? Is that here, or am I not?
I was going to say, I just got that.
Okay, that would be helpful as I'm wrapping my brain around what Bill's suggesting.
Well, what you could do is to...
Microphone on.
BB?
Yeah.
Take the first column.
Yeah, it's not totaled up.
Yeah, and get a calculator out and add it up.
I can do, I can do that.
No, I was trying to think about the answer and...
Yeah, 'cause that's what I thought. I saw those numbers in that column and...
So, what we really need is the total of that column, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I didn't know if it was someplace else, and I wasn't seeing it, that's...
But, that's only gonna give you the 23, then you'd have to, but then you can easily do the 24 from it. Yep?
Yeah, okay. That would be helpful to know what that is.
So, while you're doing that, Kim, maybe you can answer this question.
Okay.
Her spreadsheet shows expenditures from capital reserves of 674 and something this year. That number appears here under vehicles and equipment. Then, there's two other numbers that, one for buildings and one for improvements that look, that are not in her total for this year.
Are you kidding?
On these sheets. Where did they come from?
So, for building and improvements, we have 87,500 and 500, $50,000. So, we have the academy roof and the Buildings and Assessment Facilities Management Plan.
Nope, that's in '25.
Oh, were you talking for 2024?
2024.
So, remember, for 2024, we show $100,000 deposit. We don't put things for 2024...
Don't go there, here, on this sheet here.
Yep.
Where did the 186 and the 186.5 come from?
I'm gonna get mine out. So, you're looking at fiscal year 20...
24. To do what BB wants to do, we also have to make sure the numbers we're using are the right ones.
So, the 186, what was the 186 was? What do we think we were gonna do for 186?
I don't know, because these sheets only add up to the 674, 135.
Let me think what we had, 186 for...
And 186.5, they may just be coincidence, but...
I'm still saying if we, if we're spending out of 2024, 12, 120, 232. Okay, 237, 242, 252, 257, 267, 279, 379, 409.
Okay, so, yeah, we have the page 18 on your budget printout. For fiscal year 2024 shows 174.5. I know, and that's...
What page are we on?
18.
Yeah, she has the 186,000 there. I'm just trying to think, well, let me look on my... Time report.
186.5 was gravel road improvements and waste reduction program?
Right, but we're looking for the 186 in town buildings. You have it under Whipple, Whipple Hall and Bukea Building, 186.
That was the additional...
Okay.
Town meeting, right.
Town, town meeting, okay.
Sorry.
And the 180, and the other one, the 186?
Is the gravel roads, gravel roads upgrading paving, I forget what Warren article that was, and the 12,000 for the waste reduction.
Yep, okay, yep. So... Those last two didn't come out of capital reserves, is the point. They were capital outlays, but they weren't funded by capital...
That's right, one was unreserved fund balance for the 12,000, and the other one was the bond, yeah.
So, what was the answer to this?
I can't side-five your question. Okay, so, we've got 3,295,22.
3 million...
I got 49, but, all right, we're right there.
Yeah.
With each other. And then...
We added 481.5 for a total of 3,510,552. And then, we're, this says we've spent 674, 135 this year, leaves us a balance going to next year of 2,836,417.
Perfect. So, I'm proposing that we add 100, a million to that.
So, we start the year with 38, 36 approximately?
Right, and then take out...
And we're, and we're, and we're thinking we're gonna spend 1.188 million next year out of reserves. Is that correct?
Yes.
What this, is that what that says here?
That's correct.
36, 417 minus like 1188, 1188, 803. And that leaves us with a balance of 2.6 million at the end of the year. Is that people comfortable with that? I don't know if we've talked about that sort of...
We haven't.
I think the Budget Committee talked about it a little bit, about what's a good, what's a good number? What's a good baseline to have our capital reserve total amounts set at?
And I think that's where the CIP is helpful because it helps us see what might be coming down the road.
Right. It is. So, it's on the CIP for 2026, they're anticipating spending... Adam, you probably know this by heart. Are there totals? No, is there totals?
I don't believe it shows all of the departments.
Oh, so I have to use my calculator again.
And leave out the police project.
I believe that the other spreadsheet that I was telling you guys about last week, I think that has a...
Yeah. Okay.
288.
201, 350. Plus 350. Oops, I just screwed it up already.
6.
186. Plus 260.
I get about a million six, what do you get?
I haven't finished yet. 201.
For next year?
For 2026.
1,543,04.
I said a million six, yeah.
You're right there.
I don't have a calculator. I don't have a calculator, though.
1,647, is that what you said? You did it in your head, Bill?
Count of fingers.
All right. 2,647.
But then...
And then if we put another million in again, that would, I'm just thinking, thinking out...
That's what, it's basically the same numbers as you've got on your spreadsheet, Lynn.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I did, I did put...
So, if we're gonna do that, you know, it means we're gonna be eating away at it, BB.
Yep.
Because we're gonna, if we did a million a year and we spent 1,600,000 and 1,800,000, that would be, would be another over a million dollars deduction.
Yep.
But I bet, I think we have to talk about the practicality of spending 1,654 and 1,800,000 in years when we may also be doing land acquisition and a police building. But you're not in here. So, my reaction is that we've either gotta put more in or not take it out as fast. And, you know, we can spend a lot of time on it, going back and forth, but the answer's probably not in the fire, fire department. It's probably not in the highway department.
Excuse me, and you see you have the police or the communications, the capital reserve in your calculations here?
Well, that's, that's on my sheet, the 350 and...
Yeah, there's a communication, there's a communications tower in fiscal '28.
Right.
Okay.
There's dispatch consoles in '27.
Okay, excuse me, yes. So, you're done finishing?
Yeah, so, those are there. But I'm looking, I'm looking at '26, '26 and '27.
Yep.
So, then the question is gravel, are we really gonna do Whitney Brook Road in '26? We're gonna keep putting that off. We've got the... Maybe it's a project that we all want to go back home and spend some more time looking at because I think the other piece of this is doing a total sources of funds thing and saying, we probably are going to use debt for some of this. Certainly, we're gonna use debt for the police activities. At least if we follow our normal pattern on major projects. Question is, should some of the library stuff be consolidated into debt rather than being capital reserves? In the past, when we've had these major old building projects like the library, we've gone into the debt market to fund those rather than taking it out of capital reserves. So, we've got, we have sort of multiple decisions to make here. One is funding capital reserves, but the other is how, as we look ahead on these proposed major expenditures, at what point are we going to package some of them into another debt offering? And we shouldn't be putting money to capital reserves to do that. And then, obviously, you know, as we did with the fire engine, we could end up doing another lease thing, which I bet is why Jay has his hand up. But, you know, maybe we should start to think about that for some of the highway department, big, big pieces of equipment, too. We can't keep thinking that we're gonna fund all of these capital outlays with capital reserves out of the day-in-and-day-out budget, I don't think. You know, Bob's got 100 and, a million and a half dollars of stuff in '27. Are we actually gonna do capital reserves for a million and a half dollars for that stuff? And another $400,000 in '26? Or do we say, look, we're going to, two years from now, when the bond market's right, raise $2 million to buy highway equipment? That's the kind of discussion I think we have to have. You, either one of you have a, you're the, you're the pros.
I mean, I think that is a way to do it, but eventually, it catches up because you do have to keep doing these, you know, over time. So, you're either gonna have a, a payment to pay the loan, you know, and so, so if we buy this equipment 10 years down the road, we gotta do it again. I mean, eventually, it does, it is a savings to begin with, but eventually, you're gonna have bond payments...
It spreads it out.
Bond payments is as high as the potential payments into the capital reserve over time.
That's, that's...
But it is a way to do it. We did some bridges like that, even though we had a bridge capital reserve fund, we did, you know, several in the same year. So, it is a good way to do in one year when you have a big expenditure like that. But, you're still paying it back. It increases costs a little bit, obviously, for the interest, as opposed to putting money in capital reserves where you earn some interest. But then, you do have money sitting there, and that's, that's the comment that some people make. They say, you have tax money just sitting in that account, it's not being used.
And the need may change. I mean, maybe by the time we're, buy an excavator in FY '27, we'll have a different view about what we're doing, so...
Right.
The fire engine's probably the one thing that we probably won't change our mind on.
Right, and you can also do a mix, like you can save for some of it, and then what's going to be left can be bonded. But also, keep in mind, when we move forward on the police station, we are gonna be going out for bonds as we go.
Right.
So, that will increase our debt service.
Yep.
Just keep that in mind.
So, I get, I will come back to saying, my proposal is that for this year, we put approximately a million dollars more into capital reserves, figure out four or five major places to put it, rather than spreading it out into 10s and 20s, and continue the discussion about some of the longer-term financing issues because we're... If we're gonna do something with the police station, that will change dramatically the debt issues, what you're talking about. And so, maybe six months from now, we'll be a lot smarter in terms of the police station. So, we probably ought to put off, you know, major long-term discussion about that until we get some more of the work done that we talked about last night. What are the other two, do you think?
You know, it's a real conundrum. It's, do you set money aside now and let the people who live here help to subsidize future vehicles and that sort of thing? Or, do you wait until you need them and bond them, and whoever just moved into town will get a, have to have responsibility for that as well? And we've had, we've had people who've sat on this board who have disagreed on what philosophy is the best way going forward. I think it's, I think it's better to put, start putting some money aside. I think it's unwise not to.
I agree totally with that, but we have, you know, and that's, but I don't think we have the precision to say it should be 1,210,000 or something.
No, no.
And particularly, given that we're now recovering from last year's cut, let's not try to make it all up in one year.
Right, no, I agree with that.
And because the significant potential expenditure for land acquisition and/or police is still out there, it'd be a lot better if we had better information about that, even as last night, you know, when Tony was talking, we were saying that, Adam was saying, maybe the 8 to 10 million dollars that's in the CIP is too high. Because it was just a guess.
Right.
Because I was on the CIP. So, I would go back to saying, you know, sort of introducing all the issues here, that let's think about how we would put a million dollars in, how, and see what that does to help us out with these balances, and then Lynn can run this thing again, and we can look at it and say, whoops, we should've put 50,000 more in the library and 50,000 less into highway or whatever. But I don't, I personally don't want to see us doing more of these 10 and 20,000 dollar deposits.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should.
I want to do the big numbers, and, you know, I'm thinking it's a million dollars this year and a million dollars next year at a minimum. I want to do more and more, but... There we are. And we need to think about what we, you know, want to do in terms of managing the use of debt as time goes on. We need to look... We need to look, I think, at what might be coming down the pike and that's not in here on the, a major sewer expenditure, for example, in the next five years. I mean, we've got to run that debt out, and my comfort level right now with the information we're getting there isn't high enough to say we're not going to have any, right? I also think we're going to want to think about whether we want to help the water precinct with their, if they have to go look for new water. And those are big numbers.
Yeah, they're big numbers, right. Jay, you wanted to comment?
Not to muddy the waters at all. Last year, because of the recommendation of cutting pretty much all the capital reserve items by half, I did not make the recommendation, but it was something that the board of Fire Wards and I had discussed with regards to longer-term planning for the fire station. And in two thousand, a reserve account was established that was funded until two thousand and four, when the expansion was done. And at some point, hopefully before the next aerial or ladder truck gets purchased, our plan was to do some sort of expansion, as noted on the planning board's form. And my recommendation to the board this year was to not fund the radios, which I would concur with Bill, I think that's a good recommendation, but to actually put some money aside for the fire station expansion. And the rationale behind that is at least there would be some sort of conversation that might be created. I think that probably Chief Cobb, at this point, would have appreciated some money going in from a planning perspective today if we had money for architectural drawings or whatever the case is, and it's great that the consultant was hired to look at some of those, those things. And ultimately, if we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for modification of that side bay that was built by the Firefighters Association two thousand, that would ultimately be bonded, but at least some money going aside as a placeholder may be beneficial to make sure that at least the conversations being had prior to a year or two purchasing the new ladder truck. So I'm not sure how the board wishes to, to look at that project, but I think it is warranted and, and part of the issues that we have currently is we lost forty percent of our water, because we built a truck to fit in the station. We didn't have the station that would fit the piece of apparatus. So that certainly was a conundrum, and also then the, then the height, it needed to be customly manufactured in order to fit into the station.
So you mean forty percent on the truck?
Forty percent, so, so we actually have less water than our old ladder...
Right.
Because of the aerial having to be in, right.
Well, I didn't know whether you meant...
I got you.
Water.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, instead of a hundred-foot ladder, we only have a sixty. No, no.
So Jay, my reaction to that is that for a project in two thousand and thirty-two, that's the time to start funding that is not this year, when we're trying to play catch-up with last year.
I would wholeheartedly agree. I just want to keep it on the radar of...
It's clear, it's on the radar. There's no question about that.
And the other thing, too, is that you probably would want to create, and I certainly will not be chief at that point, I would assume that you'd want to plan ahead and have the building there prior to having the piece of apparatus ordered.
Of course, but, you know, my personal opinion is that that's exactly the kind of project that you almost certainly would do debt with, because it has a very long life attached to it. Debt ought to be attached to, as much as possible, to long-life projects.
Yes.
So you can tie the length of the borrowing into the life of the project.
But I also think it's warranted from the perspective of having that discussion with the residents and having an idea of what we want and what we need in moving forward in the future.
Sure, but it's like the police station, though. It's not, it's not an item that you probably are going to save up the money for in capital reserves. It's exactly the sort of thing that you, if you're doing a long-term debt schedule here, you'd say that certainly would be on it.
Okay.
And we ought to have that discussion with the residents, just as we need to have the discussion with the residents about the police thing, which has sort of been going on informally because of people...
And hence my formal request, so it's up to you guys to fund.
Nope, you're right. And I, you know, to me, the same question, and I say to Bibi, Janet, is conservation land? I mean, how much money are we going to set aside for something that we have no idea about or that would likely be capital, because it's a very long-term thing? But, you know, that's only one person's opinion. For me, I'd like to see us try to put a million here this year, a million next year, take a close look at how we're, where we're going to allocate it, and get ourselves out of the hole that we had to get into last year, and have a lot of conversation, as Jay is saying. It was, the CIP process this year was beneficial in that, and as Adam said last night, we now can sort things and we can look and see, you know, when are we buying vehicles across departments and so on that we haven't looked at before? I don't know. That's one person's opinion.
You be giving...
Yeah, I'm, do we want, do, I'm trying to decide whether it's better to start with a big number or, or have a conversation on these, looking back historically to what was put into these, and along with the line of, this might be too much for today, of the conversation of setting targets on some of these things. I'm, that's, I'm, so I'm, it, so one, one thing that's standing out to me, my first question is, the town building maintenance fund, you've got a hundred thousand dollars in there in the column for FY twenty twenty-four. Is that the library request? Okay.
And that's money that went in for twenty twenty-four? That was a contribution from us?
Okay, oh, okay, wait a second. Budget, okay, okay.
We're looking at this one, right? This report?
No.
Okay.
That report isn't working for me.
Okay.
So I'm back to this one.
Oh, you're back to the worksheet?
I'm back to the worksheets.
Oh, then, yes.
Yep. Because I wanted to look back at the historical trend.
So it's a capital outlay, right, that you're looking at?
Yep, so hold on a second. Let me, budget FY twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Hundred thousand, and it's saying FY twenty-four, actual a hundred thousand dollars. I guess that's, why is that, because every other...
That's under transfers to capital reserve, right, TCR?
Yes.
Yep, so that was, that's town buildings. That's not library buildings.
Okay.
So that's what we agreed to put in for last year, and that's what I've already...
Spent. All right, I got it now.
Right.
Okay, so, which fund is it, the, the energy projects? We have to put that back. Don't we have to make up what we cut last year because of the schedule of purchasing the, the solar panels?
You don't have to put it in. At, at the end of the contract, there will be a decision by the town whether or not we want to purchase the system, and that's what that money was supposed to do over time, have the money ready at the end of, what is it, six years? Now, Jamie and the Energy Committee has been talking about potentially not buying it and just continuing on the way we are. So that's going to be a decision in the next couple of years. So the money could go in, it doesn't have to go in. There's not going to be anything in twenty twenty-five with regard to spending that money on, on that array that's at the sewer building, which is the reason it started. The Energy Committee is thinking there may be other projects they want to use that money for, like solar on the fire department, as one example.
They'll make a recommendation.
They'll make a recommendation, okay. Okay, so I agree on at least a million.
That, I think, is some, what we're going to conclude today is...
Yeah.
Is a million about right? Too much, too little?
I think it's about right. I think it's conservative, actually.
So then we should have that number plugged into this sheet, so that we can look at, and I think we all ought to go away with whichever one of the schedules we like best or the CIP, and do our own sort of thing at another meeting, come back and...
Okay.
Come back and say, "Here's what I think we ought to do." I mean, I've told you sort of orally what I think, which is, you know, five or six major clumps this year, and spend some of the time we're saving by not having lots of discussion about the operating budget, on having this discussion when we've all done our homework.
Yeah.
And I, and Bibi, I agree with you about the targets, incidentally, because that's why I brought that up with the cemetery fund and the bridge fund earlier today.
Right.
But I, those targets are, that's another discussion.
I have another report, and I think it's at home that you did, that, that I, that was easier for me to follow.
Okay.
That's showing the balances and the historical trend, and I guess I don't have it with me, I was looking for it. So, yes, I think it's a good idea to, for us to spend some more time on this ourselves and come back for another discussion.
What we might want to do is have Kim today to give us a little opportunity to have a discussion about the proposal to spend money on, on the academy building this next year. Because we haven't had that discussion before, and that, you know, I heard that at the CIP meeting, but you haven't heard that.
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
You mean in addition to the roof that Bob is suggesting we put on?
Right, you've made, you have a proposal for us to make some adjustments in the interior of the building that you might want to...
So what I'd like to do to, to the academy building, which we haven't done really anything major there in, well, quite a while. Will Kitter, the Town Clerk Task Collector, has expressed a need to enlarge his area. This was a discussion that Linda Niklos, the person before him, also started. So that's, it's been three or four years in the making. I think most of us would agree, I hope, that it does get very tight in there. I mean, if you ever go by the office, people are standing in the hallways, which obviously is not something we want to do, and there's a lack of privacy when people are doing their business of either registering a car or trust, discussions on trust, things like that, because the two clerks are right next to each other, they're kind of sharing space in and out. We thought a lot about it. I think the only way, we, Will and I agree, the only way to do it is to come into the town administrator office. So that would require taking that wall down. Once you take the wall down, then there's carpeting that needs to be replaced, you know, there's things that follow through that. Along with that project, then the town administrator would have to go somewhere. I think the most economical thing to have happen there would be to take a part of Sid Crook Room, put a wall up, and then have town administrator office and a smaller meeting room, conference room. In order to make that work and to increase the safety, I think we need to put up cameras so that the people on the second floor see what's going on the first floor, first floor people see what's going on on the second floor. Also add locks, new locks. We currently use keys, not the best way to go, so we would go with keyless entry. And also a security system. Right now, we do have panic buttons, we have a sprinkler system, but having a burglar on, the ability to know if somebody comes in the building. So I think those things, if we could start the work here in twenty twenty-four and go into twenty twenty-five, that it would be a good use of, of the town building funds. That would, we would also, and I would do the carpeting and bathroom flooring throughout the building. Once you're going to do, start it, you may as well do it all correctly, paint the building and things like that. I don't have a huge sense for how much it would cost, whether, you know, what did we pay to take down just the wall in Communications twenty-two? And this is even, I haven't even talked to North Branch to see whether that wall could come down, the wall between Will's office and my office.
You can take down any wall.
Yeah, I guess for enough money, you can do whatever, right? But I think that would be worthwhile, and that would get the situation as far as Will's office situated properly. I used to think that the town administrator couldn't be on the second floor, because that position is one that needs to be ready to go out and speak with the public, especially if there's a problem. But I think that if there are cameras and an ability to see what's happening down there, that I don't think it would be detrimental to the public. The land use and assessing coordinator is the backup to the AA, so that person has to be close to that area. I think it's handy assessing, having assessing on the first floor. They used to be up on the second floor in Lynn's office, but I do think having them moved down has been helpful to citizens, because taxpayers, citizens can come in and ask for assessing, they're right there. So having those uses right there on the first floor, I think, works. So what's the estimate of cost for that? You know, seventy-five thousand? I don't know, a hundred thousand? You know, taking down, taking down a wall, putting up a wall upstairs, carpeting, I think the cost for cameras and things like that have gone down. You know, ten years ago, they were much more expensive. So I don't think that would be, you know, too high, but, you know, it's not, it's not a cheap project, for sure. And when I say, when I say we haven't done work on the academy building, I mean the inside, we've spent a lot of money in the past couple of years. We redid the siding, windows, insulation, so there has been a lot of work. We put in a new furnace, mini splits upstairs. So that's in the area of something I think we should do. It's not as urgent, you know, if we, if we couldn't afford to do it, but I think that this, especially in the Town Clerk Task Collector's office, they get a tremendous amount of traffic. Some people thought that with COVID, that people would stop coming in. I think there's probably more people that are now coming out than used to be, and of course, we have more citizens. I think that's the other thing. We have more people who live in town, whether they're renters or property owners, they go in the office.
Okay. Is that, is that included in the...
No. Oh, yeah, I think it's in the CIP. I think they have recorded that in there. Yeah, I thought you meant, we did not put it in the budget, it's not in the budget totals.
So Crystal, can I put you on a spot? Since you're just there here. In doing your strategic study, do you think there's going to be major changes on the inside of the library building that's going, that are going to occur that we don't know about yet? Because technology is quite different in the library business now.
Yeah. My professional opinion is that the interior of the library does not meet the needs of current and future library users, as it should. That is both a combination of technology and also the way that the space is arranged and used, and also that the carpet and paint and many of the features have been needed to be updated for a while now. There are some parts of our carpet which are very worn, we shall say. So I think that looking to the way we use our space will be, will likely wind up on, I mean, it is up to the community, to, we're trying to get a lot of feedback right now. If it isn't a priority for the community or the Board of Trustees determines that it isn't their top priority for the next three to five years, then that's entirely possible. But my professional opinion is that there is work, both inside and outside, that need to be done on the library in order to keep it going into the future.
So the reason I ask you the question is because we're talking about one old building that we want...
Yeah.
Needs to be maybe changed. And in your plan for FY twenty-five, what you're proposing to spend money on is external stuff, the garden wall and the major exterior repairs, whatever that is. So you're in the same situation that, you don't, you don't have that in here, what you just told us about is not in here at all, which is tearing down walls and reconfiguring the space.
We...
So we ought to add that to our discussion, I think.
Yeah, so that is actually projected for FY twenty-six. And that is because I don't think the immediate action will be to go into the, I think it's going to take some time to determine what to do. So the strategic plan will help us identify if that is a priority, and then there will still be a need to assess the space and, and work with contractors, so it would look to the next fiscal year, twenty-six, which was included in the CIP as interior renovations.
So it's only to the point for...
Yeah, and, and...
As we sit here, that we, there's a lot of stuff going on that we need to spend more time talking about in the, in the future, and making sure, again, for debt purposes, if we use some, that we put these projects together, these ones that are going to have long-lasting... long-lasting lives, which is different than bonding a dump truck or something that we know is going to wear. And I, you know, and looking, looking at your chart here for the CIP, you don't have a very large amount of money for interior renovations in here, which surprises me, given what I think's going to come out of your strategic study.
We can.
I'm thinking your numbers are small.
We can only work so far out, and so I think, you know, that was where we, we didn't want to put more money there until we're a little bit closer to knowing what that might look like.
But just as Jay is saying with the fire station, we know something's coming, so putting a round number so we can begin to look at, or as Kim was saying, we've been talking about taking care of this problem for the town clerk for four years now, so now maybe it's time to bite that bullet. And then, you know, another year, we'll bite the bullet on the library building and so on, but these older buildings have got to be done. And somebody ought to raise this question, I guess, today, assuming we go ahead with a police facility at some point, what are we going to do with the Buick building? I mean, none of that's in here yet.
Right.
Which is why I think we need to spend, I think we need to spend a lot more time talking about it, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's understandable.
I'm guessing that you were going to say just what you said.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing up, you know, financing, I think, for larger projects for the library, that also makes sense, and, you know, something for the Board of Trustees to consider. I'm sure they would be open to that. I just wanted to note that the reason, the other reason, not only the stone wall being a priority for 25, but the exterior repairs, we have a number of areas outside, on the outside of the building where the material has broken down and been patched, and broken down and been patched, and broken down and patched, and especially just the most recent issue where we were closed for three and a half weeks because we thought we might have a toxic mold issue because there was some moisture something happening in the building. So the trustees are really prioritizing trying to take care of that exterior envelope, and so even though from the outside you may look and say, well, it looks pretty good, well, that's because of the patching that every year has to be redone and continues to degrade over time, and it is time for, to address those from both an energy and a seal, moisture seal perspective, so.
So now it's obviously the time to tie it to the discussion that Bob and Phil Sherman had last night, which is getting this asset management work done, which should include the library, and know how much of this stuff we've got coming down the pike over a long period of time, because what you're talking about and many of the other things, we don't have good feeling for those at all, and I think this is, I'm looking at Bob, what you wanted to accomplish with the asset management program for the 30 town buildings, is that right? He's nodding yes for the recording purposes. Are you going to say something, Bob? Because I put this off, I put off, I put Phil off last night, for those who are here, because I thought that it was better discussed tonight.
What is it you'd like to know about it?
Is not the purpose of doing the asset management study to give us the opportunity and the technology, the software, to know what, when generators are going to have to be replaced, when repairs need to be done?
Yes.
Blah, 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 across all 30 buildings?
Yes, and we'd be happy to work with the library and get them in on the same thing. I mean, it makes sense. So absolutely, if that's something that they want to jump in on.
And I think that's why, for me, anyway, the 50,000 for the study that was being discussed last night ought to be in the 25 budget so that we can do that project and have that information so when we're sitting here this time next year, we have the data. But I think it's appropriately a capital expense.
It would be a huge benefit. The whole idea of it is similar to the asset management for wastewater, it just gives you that layout of what to expect over the course of how many years. There is going to be stuff that you have to update as you go. They're going to initially go in and assess stuff, but you'll still have to keep up with it through the years.
Right. I was just trying to tie back the discussion last night, where at least I was pushing you to make that a project for this budget, not try to extend it this year.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I do have numbers, if I can leave this with one of you guys, if you want to, just so you got.
She loves them.
So, Janet. After all of that, I'm going to propose that we put the million dollars hold in there, that we go off, do our own thinking about this individually, and come back, maybe at the end of next month at our regular meeting, and talk about it, and that will still be in time to give the Budget Committee information about where we stand on this issue.
All right, and so you're asking for recommendations on where we should allocate.
Right.
The money, how we would divide it up.
And if it's enough.
And if it's enough, okay.
Or too much.
So anything else we've got to go over?
So do you want to do that at the November 30 meeting, or do you want to have another meeting just for that? Because in November, you're meeting on the 9th, and you're going to invite Bob in to talk about conservation since he couldn't get here, and then your next regular meeting's the 30th.
That's up to you.
And Budget Committee starts.
That's up to you and Janet in terms of what else is on the agenda.
Budget Committee starts on the 29th of November.
Probably the 9th. Okay, November 9?
Okay.
Okay. And one other sort of thing while we're doing our homework, we've had hanging out there since June, the idea about whether any of these capital reserve funds ought to be combined, and having brought that up, I've come to the conclusion that only two, in my opinion. The DPW Building Fund and the Town Maintenance Fund ought to be combined, otherwise there's good reason not to do any others. You might want to think about that, both.
Which one, DPW and what else?
There's an old DPW fund with Lynn, help me, how much money in it? A handful of money.
Oh, yeah, just a handful.
$12,000 or something.
Okay.
We ought to combine that with the Town Building Maintenance Fund, understanding that the DPW buildings are part of the town maintenance.
Okay, and that's.
Thing, and then.
And that'll have to be.
We'll have to go through a few steps, town meeting, to do that, but.
Right, okay.
But the end result would be we would eliminate that one fund.
Okay.
So that when we're thinking about this, we would hope that there would be 12,000 and some odd dollars added to the Town Building Maintenance Fund because of the transactions we'd go through to close and then transfer.
Okay.
Are we good? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.